If I could have everybody's attention, I'd like to call the September 10th, 2024 work session to order. We have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Wes. All in favor? Unanimous. If we could all rise, we will have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our meeting. We have several things on the agenda. First is our new superintendent presentation with Mr. Mitch Young.
That's what I've heard. Two months. Okay, so this is a kind of a combination of a presentation that I'm making as I go out to meet with all 43 schools. I've been kind of on a tour of schools. One of the things I've talked about for years with our new principals is making sure when they get named as principal, they're meeting with their staff for the first time, it's really important to share their journey and their why behind their what as they go out and do that. And as I've taken this job that you guys have blessed me with, that's been thrown back at me by the principals saying, okay, hey, well, when you come out, we expect to hear your school visit about your why and how you ended up here. And it was fortunate because at the time that I had an opportunity to present to you earlier in trying to get the job, I had some of that put together. So this is sort of a combination of what I shared with you, what I'm sharing with the schools. Most of you know these stories. These four folks back here have heard this, you know, a couple of times. But for anybody who's out there watching, like hopefully somebody watches these out there, this will give them a little insight about their new superintendent and how I got here. If nothing else, maybe my dad will watch this and I know he'll get tickled watching this. So in any case, I always, as a public educator, I always start with this question. Why are we here? What is the ultimate purpose in public school education? And we probably all have different reasons for that. For me, it really comes down to this. And what I always preface this with is I'm not running, nor do I intend to ever run for political office. So this may sound political because everybody has their political lens on, given this election year. But this has been my driving why behind my what for about the last 24 years. And it's that I, at the end of the day, I believe public education, for me anyway, is all about equipping our kids to achieve their American dream. We can't achieve it for them, but we can provide all the necessary tools that they have to be able to achieve it. And I believe that the American dream is a real thing. And so that's where I am as an educator. And so the next couple of minutes, I'll share with you how I got to this point. I'll take you back in a little journey to my childhood so you can see how I got to this point. But from a classroom teacher and coach to my time as an administrator and a principal, as a deputy superintendent, and now in this role, this continues to drive my passion for public school education. So this started for me, I grew up in a town of East Smithfield, Pennsylvania, population at that time about 2,100, which is about 400 fewer students, or excuse me, 400 fewer people than we have students at West Forsyth High School, just to give you a perspective. So very humble roots. You know, my mom, if she happens to watch this at some point, will be upset because she hated that I, you know, the idea that we grew up in a double wide, but she would call it a modular home, you know? But listen, it was a great home that she and my dad and my family created, and we didn't think about that kind of stuff as kids. You grew up where you grew up, and it was awesome. It was awesome. And it was awesome because of the people I had in my life. So this gentleman that you see with the glasses on, Harold Mitchell, was the local general store owner and the postmaster. That was several years after he had retired, the store there, Allen &amp; Mitchell's Grocery Store. But everywhere I would go, people would say, you're Harold Mitchell's kid? And I said, yeah. Do you know your grandfather's the most honest man in East Smithfield? And I recognized there was only 2,100 people that lived in East Smithfield. So, but at the time, that was a big deal. That was a big role model for me. And his wife, my grandmother Irma, got me hooked on reading, got me hooked on history. And, you know, I went on to be a history teacher, and that was all rooted in Grandma Mitchell. There's the general store, there's the little house that I grew up in with my two little sisters there, and these were the first steps on the road to where we are today. These pictures, I'm not going to go through them all, but if you grew up in the 60s, 70s, or 80s, these pictures are probably pretty familiar to you. That was the backdrop of my youth. And quite honestly, if you grew up in those times, you lived with the everyday threat that today might be the day that the Soviets launched their nuclear missiles. And it's game, I think we knew by about third grade that duck and cover probably wasn't going to work. And so, you know, we would start every day in school, all the way through, I think, about seventh grade, we would start every day singing patriotic songs and just being proud of the country that we had the opportunity to live in. So that's very, very deep in me, that the American dream was something about, we talked about all the time. And if you live in that, you have people you look up to, you know, in various stages of your life. Certainly down there, you have in the TV age, the greatest American father of all time, Charles Ingalls. You know, again, Ronald Reagan's picture up there, not as a political statement, but if you were a child in the 80s, he gave you a sense of pride in your country and confidence. And then obviously, sports became a big part of my life. And really, my driving desire was to one day serve in the Air Force. Unfortunately, I can't ride an elevator without getting motion sick. Probably would have affected me had I gone into the Air Force, but that was certainly a dream of mine. The other dream was to play basketball for my dad. He was a very successful high school coach. You can see him there on the far right. And I got to live that dream and play basketball for him in high school. If you look at that picture down on the right there in action, I'm cut off a little bit, but my vertical leap is pretty impressive back then. But that was sort of where my dreams stopped, is I really wanted to play ball for him, and I got the chance to do that. We lost in the championship game for our league, and I've never, I don't think I've ever quite let that go. That's burned at me forever. But I went on to Dickinson College in Carlisle, Pennsylvania. And at Dickinson College, I really had a great time, but I didn't have a lot of direction, and I really wasn't going anywhere. So I spent two years there. I'll never forget fraternity house, my sophomore year, we were watching the ESPYS, which are the equivalent of the ESPN's version of the Oscars. And that year, they awarded the Arthur Ashe Courage Award. It was the first time they'd given it to somebody, to Jim Valvano, who was one of my favorite coaches as a kid growing up. And he gave one of the most inspirational speeches. And in that speech, I realized, oh, my gosh, I've got to get my life together, and I've got to have a purpose or plan. He said, you've got to know where you came from, you've got to know where you are right now, and you've got to know where you want to go. And if you don't know where you want to go, you're not going to get anywhere. And literally, that got me thinking, that was in March, I went on a bunch of college visits in April, spring break of that year, and decided I was going to transfer to Florida State University and begin my path towards something. And that something was coaching and teaching. Pat Kennedy, another big important influence on my life, was the head basketball coach at Florida State at that time, kind of took me in as an addition to his family. I met my beautiful bride when I was in Tallahassee. She'll be mortified if she ever sees this and knows that I put this picture on there. But we've been married now 27 years and have two children. And those were really my next steps towards having a purpose and becoming an educator. It led me sort of on a goose chase. I followed the college coaching pathway for a few years, DePaul University in Chicago. I went there with Coach Kennedy. I got an opportunity to go to St. Francis University of Pennsylvania. And then ultimately, when we decided to start a family, that brought me to Georgia, closer to my wife's family. And I became a teacher and coach at Shiloh High School in Gwinnett County. That was in the year 2000. This next part, I share it because it's a part of my journey. I don't for a minute take this role that I'm in now as a role to try to evangelize or proselytize or convert anybody, but it's an important part of my journey. In 2001, my mom, kind of late in life, had come to Christ and began to work immediately on me and my sisters about where we were in our faith journeys. And at that point, I really didn't have a faith journey that I was following, and I was pretty resistant. And she tried to work on me and didn't get far. She knew I was a lover of history and started sending me tapes, if anybody remembers what tapes are, cassette tapes, of David Jeremiah. As time went on and the two of them sort of wore me down, I finally turned over a new leaf and accepted Christ and began a faith journey that continues today. The reason that's so important is that that gave me purpose in my personal life, all right? That was in 2001 in the summer. Shortly after that, this happened, and this is one of those, you remember where you were when it happened. I'm teaching world history, of all things. When a knock on the door, you've got to turn your TV on. And of course, like everybody, we were glued to the TV set probably for the next 48 hours, nonstop. And that began, not began, that week, it crystallized for me what my professional purpose in life was going to be. So I had a private purpose now, and my professional purpose, it crystallized that this was going to be a way, as an educator, this was going to be my way to serve our country. Not sure I ever had visions of going beyond being a teacher and a coach, but my purpose in every one of those has been what I shared, you know? This became my private purpose or my personal purpose, my family. These two wonderful children are graduates now Forsyth County Schools. Joseph is off the family payroll for two weeks now, which is pretty exciting, down in Jacksonville. And his sister, my daughter Alexis, is in her first year of her doctoral studies, getting her doctorate in physical therapy. So Forsyth County Schools did our children very, very, very well. And, you know, that's, I'm certainly proud of what we do as a school system and the roles that I've had and the jobs that I've had, but nothing makes me more proud than what the teachers and educators have done for my own children and my family. In any case, my professional goal at that time in 2001 crystallized, and it became what I shared with you at the beginning. So that's sort of how I got to this point. That's how I got to that point. My next steps were to move Forsyth County Schools because of our children. We wanted to come here because of the, for the schools. So in 2007, we moved here, and in that time, I've been a taxpayer, a parent, a teacher, administrator, principal for seven years at Central, three years as deputy superintendent, serving you guys and Dr. Bearden, and now I'm in this role that you've given me to be superintendent. But that's the journey of how we got here. In the role of superintendent, and I've certainly to the crew that's out here, we've got behind us, our incredible cabinet, and with all the different teachers and staff I'm meeting with, and it's the same that I shared with you when I interviewed for the job, is we're not looking to change directions as a school system. We're looking to build on where we are. We're looking to follow the advice that Dr. Bearden used to share, is we're either getting better or getting worse, but not staying the same. Well, we want to get better. But the direction that we're headed in has not changed, and the learner profile continues to be our North Star. That's the ultimate objective in Forsyth County Schools. When you break that down, when you boil down the learner profile, it really boils down to helping lead our kids to become problem solvers and effective communicators, and then hopefully leveraging those skills and those talents into serving others. And that's really, when you read through all the tenants of the learner profile, that's really what it's all about. Our role, if that's our big picture, we know that our mission is all about providing unparalleled education for all to succeed. We've got a strategic plan that guides that, all right? And that strategic plan boils down to safe, connected, and thriving. And certainly, I'm making this presentation just days after the tragedy in Barrow County, so safe is on the forefront of all of our minds. I will tell you, as you look back in the back of the room with all of our folks, but certainly Todd Shirley and his department, safe is always on their mind, it's continuously on their mind. It's on my mind as a superintendent. I'm certain it's on your mind as a board. With the backdrop of this tragedy, it certainly goes on the front burner of everybody's conversations. But it's always on our mind, and we're always doing things. And we're going to talk next week, I'll set this up in a second, but we're going to talk specifically next week about the things that we do in our school system and with our partners in the Sheriff's Department to make sure that we have a safe environment for all of our teachers and staff. Connected, I don't know that any school system does a better job of providing opportunities from career pathways to clubs and activities and anything a kid could imagine as a way to get connected, we provide it. And if our schools don't have it, then they create it, and the kids have the opportunity to create their own interest groups and follow those passions. So we absolutely do a wonderful job in safe and connected. And when it comes to thriving, there's debate out there, are we good or are we great? And my argument is we're really, really good. I still think we could do more to become great. I think it becomes really easy to measure, things like college readiness and career readiness through test scores, and test scores are very important indicators, pathway completion, graduation rates, those are all very, very important indicators that we do exceedingly well on. But when you look at the learner profile, are we thriving in the learner profile, it has to go beyond just things that are measurable by test scores and measurable rates. Thriving on that learner profile means that we would be doing these things extremely well, too. And these are hard to measure, being people ready, being life skills ready, being resiliency ready. And those are the things, quite frankly, as a community, if we could get to where we're doing great on this, then we're dealing with some of the challenges that lead to some of these unfortunate tragedies. So these are bigger than just us, these involve our community, this involves parents. And certainly, the challenge that I've been placing out there to teachers as I've gone around and started meeting with them all, is that while they have their standards, they have got to work to figure out how to weave these things into those standards so they can truly bring the learner profile to life. And that's how we get to thriving. These are some of the steps that I've shared with teachers that I believe they should be considering and taking as they go along. And you could turn these into questions. The questions I ask teachers, are you holding high expectations for all of your students? Not a select group of students, but holding high expectations for all of them. And this is where debate in our cultural, political, social, culture world, a term like equity gets misused all the time. We don't expect that every child is going to have an equal outcome, all right? What we have to provide is an equal opportunity and equal launchpad. And if a kid comes into us with challenges, we've got to provide whatever supports they need to level that playing field so they have an equal shot at it. Now, what they do with that shot is going to be based on those people skills and work ethic and those things. But it's our job as educators to make sure they have an equal shot. And the worst thing you can do is lower the expectations to a kid. We have to keep the expectations up, but then we also have to come in with this side, this other hand, and provide the supports they need to get there. Emphasizing character. I think as a society, this is an issue where we've so fixated on self-esteem that we've lost sight of character. And self-esteem is very important. But the best way to boost a self-esteem is to get knocked down and get back up and then succeed. And I think as a society, we're so worried about self-esteem, we don't ever want our kid to get knocked down. And I don't mean physically, but I mean challenged academically. There are times when, you know, a kid doesn't meet the mark because they didn't put the work in. Well, we don't need to just move them along because we're worried about their self-esteem. We need to hold them accountable and make them work for it. And we're living in a society right now that honors the trophy, participation trophies and all that. I'm not going to get into all that, I understand that. But what I've told teachers, the best way that they can instill and emphasize character is to model that every day, that they need to model resiliency, they need to model perseverance, they need to recognize that they cannot have a bad day as a teacher. They can have a bad day as a person, but they got to compartmentalize that, and when they're in front of their students, they've got to turn it on. And if they don't feel they can, then they need to use one of their sick days, and they need to reach out and get some coverage to where they can be at their best for those kids every day. I tell teachers they've got to recognize the impact that they have, that they may be the only positive influence that a kid may see all day long, and that they need to multiply that impact by collaborating with other teachers, by working with new teachers. New teachers can teach the old college or something now and then, but they've got to work together on that. And the other thing that I challenge them is to stop discouraging kids from going into education. We need the best and the brightest in education, the same way we need the best and the brightest in medicine and in engineering. And so our human resources department, our career tech departments, have done an incredible job of helping us to build our own pipeline for teachers, and we've got to continue to support that and continue to foster that. And then the last thing I challenge our teachers with is that they have to understand that the pieces that make teaching are the same elements that make leading. So if you're going to be a great leader and you're going to be a great teacher, they have to recognize those are one and the same. So they need to start seeing themselves in the classroom as leaders. And we've got our leader profile that I thought was the next slide, but it's not in there, but that leader profile spells that out for our teachers, how to be leaders, the same way our learner profile spells out what we're looking for for our students. If we do a great job on all these, we're going to lead our kids not just to graduate, but we're going to be in Forsyth County cranking out the next leaders for our society and for our nation. And I think we need to take that very, very seriously. What do we need to do to continue this climb towards greatness that we're trying to achieve in this county? Three things that I think are a part of our secret sauce that we've got to continue to do better than anybody else, and that's we've got to recognize the importance of collaboration. We always emphasize relationships, but not for the sake of just getting along with people. Relationships that we want to build are so that we can collaborate and become problem solvers as a school system, along with our community, and we've got to learn how to then, as we problem solve, effectively communicate that. And that collaboration, by the way, leads to a lot of trust. The other thing that collaboration leads to is innovation. And so our school system has been known for its innovation for years, and a lot of that innovation doesn't start necessarily at the district office and go down, but the autonomy we give our principals allows them the space that they need when they collaborate with their colleagues to innovate. And then that usually comes up and out, and we've got to continue to foster that collaboration and innovation. And as the trust continues to grow as we have it, that third element, that the third, perhaps most important element, if you like to gloss over, is the accountability piece. But this is where we have an incredible partnership with our community that holds us accountable when it comes to their tax dollars, when it comes to conversations about safety that we're having right now, that they're going to hold us accountable. Within our school buildings, the same thing needs to happen. We need to be holding each other accountable if you're on the same design team or you're in the same professional learning community. Our team, we hold each other as a governance team accountable. And that is what makes us so unique and so special as a school system, and we certainly don't ever want to lose that. So those are the three guiding principles. When I first met with you, I had made a series of proposals for things to consider about some shifts to make within our school system. And just very briefly, what I would tell you, we are a large school system, and we recognize that. But for years and years and years, what we would do, operating like a small school system, is that we would hire the absolute best people and build structures around our people. Well, we're at the size and have a talent pool deep enough that we can now establish the structures that align to our strategic plan and find the right people to fill in where those structures are needed, as opposed to the other way around. And so to do that, we've done some realignment. I proposed this to you back in February, some of these proposals, and these were the six that I shared with you. I sort of put out there that this would be something we could roll out over, you know, two to three years, and you challenged me on that and said, well, wait a minute, you have these relationships, you can do these things a little faster. And I didn't want to get out ahead of my teammates here in the back. And so I took what I shared with you, and I've shared that with all of our associate superintendents and chiefs, and I was overwhelmingly pleased and surprised, not shocked, but encouraged and affirmed that as I went through these with all of our folks, they were all on board with saying, why wait? Let's do this, it makes sense. So I'm not going to go through all these for the sake of time, but we had had student support services, and student support services all as one big department, where you had basically special ed, you know, on one side of the department, and then you had student support, which would be your counselors, social workers, and that group on the other side. And while they were receiving great leadership from Sarah Taylor in that, their overall purpose and mission was really very different. So it was really, Sarah was managing two departments under one roof. And when we analyzed this, and as I've looked at this over the last few years, there was so much overlap between the student safety department and student support, where there wasn't as much overlap in the other two departments. And so when you think about who goes in, and this is so timely right now, and I'm so excited that next week, that Todd Shirley and Sarah Von Ash and Steve Hahn are going to present to you next week about what's going on. But in Steve's department, you had the SROs, our PBIS work, and our SASs, our Student Advocacy Specialists. And in the student support, you had counselors and social workers and nurses, to name a few. Those groups should be working together on a daily basis, and they were in different departments. And whenever you have different departments in bureaucracy, there can be some walls or some territories. And so what's happened is we've re-divided those out, and Sarah Taylor is leading the student services, along with the school psychologist that used to be on the other side of the building. She's taken that and has streamlined that work with Kara Hudspeth and our federal programs director, Amy Chang, and they are clicking with gas right now. And on the other side, we brought together these groups of counselors, social workers, and all Steve's department, and they are now all under Todd Shirley's direction. And just met today, actually, and it's just remarkable how quickly those groups are gelling together with a common purpose. And so what all these moves were designed to do were to streamline our efforts, to make sure the structures are in place, to enhance collaboration, to enhance innovation, and to enhance accountability. And so that's just one example. I won't go through all these, but those were some of the structural changes that I promoted to you guys when we first met. And thanks to the people on this team, these are already in motion. And as we go through the year, you'll hear updates from these departments, and they'll share with you about the changes that have been made and how it's impacting their work. Really excited that next week, we'll have Todd and his crew here as the first up on this. That was part of the plan to begin with, but certainly now, the timeliness of that is, you know, is super important. And then ultimately, I shared this with you and continue to share this with all of our principals, but you have to trust your people. If you're going to be successful, you've got to trust your people. You got to trust, there's the verify part, I had Ronald Reagan on there earlier, so there's the trust but verify, but you trust your people. You have systems that win championships, you win with people. And when it comes to our teachers and our leaders in our school buildings, this leader profile is really, this is the North Star for making sure that we have the right people in our school buildings and the right people in this building. And so this guides us in all of our interview processes, this is a part of we weave this into our evaluations, and this is where we know we can trust our people, but also where we can hold accountable to verify. So you trust your people. Once you have the right people in place, you have to work your process or your processes. Our school improvement plans, that are now aligned to our strategic plan, those are examples of processes that we have in place. And when we talk processes, it's all about intentionality, and it's all about having a common purpose. For me, anybody that's worked for me, I won't look back there because they'll roll their eyes and laugh, but this has been my process ever since I was a classroom teacher. You know, it's just simply backwards design. You start with the end in mind. Where is it you're trying to get? And once you know where you want to go, you've got to determine what are going to be my measures to show that we're on track to get there. And once we have our desired location picked out that we want to go, and we know what our success criteria or our mile markers are going to be, then you make a plan to get there. And then you stop on the way and you reassess, where are we right now? Where are we going? Our strategic plan's a perfect example of this. This is what we use to put our strategic plan together. We are at the halfway point, all right? In January, we'll be at the halfway point. As I've shared with all the folks I've gone to visit, in November, what used to be our community and parent advisory groups where we would go around and do the show and tells at different schools, this year, we're altering what we're doing with that. And I've warned all the LSD and PTO parents that they're not coming for a big lunch and entertainment, they're coming to work this year. And so we're going to do a mid-plan checkpoint with all of our PTO and LSD officers that are sent from each school to represent, and we're going to go back through the SWOT analysis that we did at the beginning of this process to see where, how are we doing? Are we hitting the mark in our strategic plan? And that's where we say on this wheel, where are we right now? And do we need to adjust going forward? So that's an example of a process. And then the third part is you've got the right people in place, and you trust them and empower them. As you work your processes, the last thing is that you have to stick together. Storms are going to come, and folks, we're in one of those storms right now. And the key in a storm like this is you have to assume the best of each other. And I cannot tell you the numbers of parent emails that I got in my inbox last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and early Monday. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and early Monday. And I answered each and every one of those parent emails with very candid responses that we don't have a magic wand, but here are the things that you may not be aware that we are doing. And assuming that they wanted the best, almost all those responses were returned with another response to me in appreciation that demonstrated that they were assuming the best and that I was. And I think that's so important, that we have to model that as a governance team. We have to model that at the district level for our principals, and principals have to do that together. So all that requires resiliency. And we said that's the one big missing piece that we've got to build into our kids. And we face this VUCA world, this vulnerable, unpredictable, complex, ambiguous world that we're facing, and we have got to be resilient in the face of that, no matter what comes at us politically or culturally, or pandemics or tragedies. We have got to stick together if we want to keep this ship moving in the right direction. So with that, trust our people, work our processes, stick together. That is what I'm out there preaching. I wanted you to see where that came from. Hopefully, you got a little glimpse of that. And I'm just so honored. Again, I know I've thanked you individually and as a group, but I'm so grateful for this honor to be able to lead the school system. I honestly, and you know I'm sincere when I say this, I honestly cannot imagine doing it without this team of folks that we have out here behind us. And I look forward to moving forward with this governance team. I'm going to assume you have no questions, but I'm here if you have some.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that we're so smart for hiring you, first of all. It was our idea to begin with. No, this last week and week and a half has been a challenge, and I think we've all felt the pressure. I want to say that I'm super proud, and I know we offer this way, and the way you've handled it, Superintendent Young, but every other person in this room as well. It's difficult because you're talking about, you know, a tragedy that occurred somewhere else, but we're all feeling it here, right? And we almost felt like we were in crisis here, even though honestly, we weren't, but we felt it. And you guys have all handled it expertly, and I'm so proud of you guys. And being a parent that sends my kids into these schools, I didn't miss a beat. I didn't hesitate because I know that we've got a bunch of experts out there, including the principals and the people in these buildings that are doing everything above and beyond what needs to be done for these kids. So thank you. Good job. Well done, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to go and share this with the schools. I've heard from different people in the community that have been at the LSCs or the PTOs. They've really enjoyed it and getting to know you better on a personal, professional level. And just, I think it just brings, you know, the change, sometimes just not knowing is, makes things uncomfortable. So getting to know you better, I know it has been well received. Hawk Creek, they were disappointed that you had to reschedule, but they're really excited for you to come back.
I'll be back, I promise.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I think what you're doing is great. I also think too, you know, you're touching on, you know, the profession of education, which I think got a major hit after COVID. You know, we're just kind of people thinking, you know, downgrading it and stuff like that. And I just feel like your presentation just brings it back. It really elevates it. You know, there's a lot of integrity in the position. People do feel a calling, you know, it's providing care. And yeah, you're teaching students, but you're really building people, you're building leaders. And that's the other thing I love about this is that, you know, at Hawk Creek at the LSC, Dr. J did talk about leaders. You know, she's like, I'm the leader of the school, but every one of my students has to be their own leader in order for our whole ship to function, right? And so that message, whether originated from you or just as Forsyth County as a whole, just that culture, I love that our kids are being, you know, ingrained in that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mincy. I appreciate it. I think I was so focused on that presentation that I... Okay, that's the policy. Larry, are you coming down?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Since tonight, we're looking at review of Policy DE debt limitation. I did not see any necessary changes to the policy.
Okay.
Does everybody have a chance to look at it? Anybody have comments or anything? Good? Good. Okay, next we have review of Policy DE debt limitation.
Again, Policy DE debt limitation. After reviewing the policy, I did not see any necessary changes to this policy.
Okay. Questions for me? Do you have any expectations of the policy? There you go. All right. Thank you very much.
And again, if you're with us for the first time, we do this every month just to refresh.
Right. We're just going over all the policies throughout the year because just to keep them all up to date so I don't have to change. Okay, and now we have future agenda items.
I have one item. You guys should have in front of you a proclamation that this board adopted last year for Hispanic Heritage Month. We don't need to adopt it again because it's been previously adopted, but I'd like to have it put on next week's agenda, where we can have some folks from the community come up, and we'll just read it again as a reminder to the schools out there.
Okay. Any comments? All righty. Okay, now, do I have a motion to go into executive session for tribunal appeal, land, and personnel?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Mike. All in favor? Unanimous.